This is a normal procedure for our board meetings, so this sounds a lot better now. We will be video and audio recorded. Thank you. I would now like to ask Vice Chair Treitz to read the motions adopted in camera.
Thank you. So motions adopted in camera. There was a motion regarding property that was adopted, a motion regarding the memorandum of settlement between the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association and the Education Workers Alliance of Ontario, EWAO, resolved that conditional upon the acceptance that local collective agreement terms remain status quo for the period September 1, 2017, to August 31, 2019, and conditional upon enabling legislative changes and designation, the Halton Catholic District School Board ratifies an extension of the 2014-2017 collective agreement, including central and local terms, as follows: "The Halton Catholic District School Board ratified that the local terms of the 2014-2017 collective agreement, ineffective between the Halton Catholic District School Board and EWAO, extend and remain status quo for the period September 1, 2017, to August 31, 2019. As set out in the extension agreement, an attached appendices dated January 20, 2017, made between the Council of Trustees Association and the Education Workers Alliance of Ontario and agreed to by the Crown. The Halton Catholic District School Board ratified the extension of the central collective agreement terms as outlined and contained in the extension agreement, and attached appendices dated January 20, 2017, made between the Council of Trustees Association and the Education Workers Alliance of Ontario and agreed to by the Crown. Be it further resolved that the approval of the ratification of the central and local terms be reported to Oxta by March 4, 2017." A motion regarding the memorandum of settlement between the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association and the Ontario English Catholic Teachers Association, OECTA, OECTA, resolved that conditional upon the acceptance that local collective agreement terms remain status quo for the period September 1, 2017, to August 31, 2019, and conditional upon enabling legislative changes, the Halton Catholic District School Board ratifies an extension of the 2014-2017 collective agreement, including central and local terms, as follows: "The Halton Catholic District School Board ratified that the local terms of the 2014-2017 collective agreements, ineffective between the Halton Catholic District School Board and OECTA, extend and remain status quo for the period of September 1, 2017, to August 31, 2019. As set out in the extension agreement, an attached appendices dated January 26, 2017, made between the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association and the Ontario English Catholic Teachers Association and agreed to by the Crown. The Halton Catholic District School Board ratified the extension of the central collective agreement terms as outlined and contained in the extension agreement, and attached appendices dated January 26, 2017, made between the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association and the Ontario English Catholic Teachers Association and agreed to by the Crown. Be it further resolved that the approval of the ratification of central and local terms be reported to Oxta by March 4, 2017." Information received in Canada for Human Resources Activity Report: retirements are Dominique de Filippo, Slavko Rey, and Mary Anne Williams, retiring June 30, 2017; hiring, Kristin Suero, Taylor Cooper, hired as probationary teachers effective February 6, 2017; special education consultant and temporary special education consultant, Jody O'Reilly, appointed as special education consultant, effective February 6, for a period of up to three years with the possibility of a one-year extension; and Jane Moth Arsenault, appointed as temporary special education consultant, effective February 6, 2017, and with an end date to be determined. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for reading the motions adopted in camera and the information received in camera. We will now go to the agenda. Could I have a mover for the agenda? Trustee Murray? Moving it. Trustee Rowe?
I'd like to make an amendment if I could, please.
An amendment, okay. The amendment?
On behalf of the student trustees, could we move up item 10.1, move it up earlier in the agenda?
Item 10.1, yes. Where, let's just see, let's just see where we can put that. We could probably bring that right up to before the delegations as presentations. Would that be all right? That's an issue? Okay, all right. So we will move the student trustee information to item four. Okay, thank you. Any other amendments while we're on that? No. We've got trustee Murray moving it, seconded by trustee Rowe. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay. A declaration of conflict of interest. Do we have anyone? Nope. Okay, thank you. Student trustee, your presentation. Ladies?
So we're also going to try to make this short as well. So this past weekend, we actually got the opportunity to take part in Oxta Acre Board Council Conference, which provided us with an outstanding opportunity to discuss major issues within our education system with both public student trustees, Catholic student trustees, and for the first time in a really long time, French student trustees. We also took part in different professional development activities with all the student trustees across Ontario, which was very interesting to find out what they're doing within their boards and how their boards are dealing with a variety of different things. We've also, our three initiatives have also been well on their way with the Bullying Prevention Gala, different invitations have been sent out, and the planning, Christina has been working very, very hard on it. Our international students actually have a dinner that we've been trying to organize and plan for a while that will be hosted at St. Thomas Aquinas this Thursday, welcoming the international students and different friends they've made throughout their time here. And in terms of the Student Wellness Forum, we have had some new information come to our attention that has left us unsure of where we stand with this initiative. Rather than like miscommunicating what's going to happen, we would like to give you all the information next meeting, so in two weeks when we have everything clear. If my two co-trustees would like to add something, they're more than welcome.
Christina, we need to get you on microphone.
Thank you. Yeah, so we'll just communicate any new information that we have. We're just a little bit unsure of where we are right now.
Okay, no problem. Ingrid, did you have anything to add?
Basically, just what my fellow student trustees said, and we hope that we will navigate this issue well, and that our information, the information we receive will be well navigated.
Okay, thank you. Do trustees have any questions for the student trustees? No? Okay, thank you very much, ladies. We are now moving into the delegations, and we have for Northeast Oval, a pupil accommodation review, 5.1. We have, I don't know, it's an M. Peros and N. Postich. Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing. You may be the first but you won't be the last. I mispronounced tonight. Thank you.
Please start when you're ready.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. My name is Maya Peros, and this is Nancy Plastich, and we are from Holy Family School. We are asking the trustees to turn down option 12B with respect to the closure and consolidation of Holy Family School with St. Marguerite du Ville. We are here to delegate to the Board of Trustees on the topic of community impacts on of option 12B. St. Marguerite du Ville is a school with the current building capacity of 585 students. The projected enrollment is showing to steadily decline over the long-range horizon 2028. The consolidation of the two schools would result in a total population at the school of 652 students in the year 2021, well beyond the capacity of the building. We have heard from the St. Marguerite du Ville community, and the comments include concern of overcrowding, increased traffic congestion, and decreased usable play space. We ask the Board to consider that the public, that the public open house comments expressed by the St. Marguerite du Ville community, including some of the following concerns. The first quote, "Students may be resistant to having new kids join their classroom. I've already heard one child express that they do not want Holy Family kids coming to their school." Next quote, "Not a fair distribution of students in the area. Holy Family students in either option are being forced to give up their walk to school in favor of busing." Next quote, "Increased car and bus traffic around the school, which has narrow streets, nor additional parking, bus lanes and other infrastructure required to accommodate more students at the school. Both school communities have stated concern about the consolidation through public consultation. We believe that this makes for an unhealthy beginning with little consideration for students, teachers, and neighborhoods which it will affect. The trustees should note that the meeting minutes of Accommodations Review Committee on January 16, 2017, states that ARC representatives of the Holy Family and St. Marguerite du Ville schools voted against option 12B."
Timeline considerations. We recognize that over time, the population of these two schools may decline, and that consolidation of the schools may be a possible solution. However, we feel that trying to solve a potential problem 15-plus years into the planning horizon is too uncertain, has too many unknowns, and will cost taxpayers with today's money. This seems like a poor use of resources. Eventually, the numbers at either school may decline to a point where Holy Family could simply slide into St. Marguerite without the need to renovate the school. In the fullness of time, option 12B will become a zero-funded option. Please don't close the doors of Holy Family today when we really don't have enough information. Other community impacts. We would also like the trustees to note that development north of Dundas Street continues without signs of slowing down. The Minto and the Shield Bay developments located east of Trafalgar Road, north of Dundas Street, will be pulling, pulling building permits in 2017. Where will these students attend school until schools in their own neighborhoods are complete? Please note that there is no current development application for a school in these communities. However, land is set aside. Is it possible that some of the overflow will be directed to St. Marguerite, further exhausting the capacity of the school? We think so. Lastly, we'd like to bring the trustees' attention to a petition in opposition of closing Holy Family School, which has been signed by 300-plus parents. This was sent to the director's office, and the online petition can be found at the provided website, change.org/saveholyfamilycatholicsschooloakville.org. Comments include remarks such as, quote, "This is a great school and should be kept. Our son went to St. Marguerite, and the parking and traffic is crazy in the morning and after school. To add more students here will only make what's already congested worse." Second quote, "It is important to have a Catholic school in our area. Please reconsider the option for keeping Holy Family." Third quote, "The Falgerwood district is changing. Settled in the 1970s, many elderly residents are selling and new families are moving in." In summary, we are asking the trustees to respect the voices of the communities affected by option 12B and to please stop the closure of Holy Family School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, ladies. Do trustees have any questions for clarification? Okay, thank you very much, ladies. We would now like to ask Mr. Bilbao to come forward, please. That's delegation 5.2.
Hello.
Whenever you're ready.
Hello. My name is Martin Bilbao, and I'm, and my wife and I have children currently enrolled at Holy Family Catholic School. I'm asking the trustees to turn down option 12B with respect to the closure and consolidation of Holy Family Catholic School with St. Marguerite du Ville. I am here to delegate to the Board of Trustees on the topic of proximity of other elementary schools. The facts: Holy Family Catholic School is flanked by two neighboring elementary public schools, Sheridan Public School, which is located 200 meters away, and Falgerwood Public School, which is located approximately 300 meters away from Holy Family School. In order to better understand the expected community impact as a result of option 12B, a survey and petition was conducted by a group of school representatives. The result of this survey indicated that 91% of families asked would move their child, children to the nearby public school. Parents responded yes to the following statement: "If Holy Family is closed, I will move my child to the local public school." The best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. In 2013, the school board changed the secondary school boundaries, and Holy Family was directed from Holy Trinity to St. Thomas Aquinas High School. In 2013, 16 out of 29 students left the Catholic school system to attend Iroquois Ridge High School instead of St. Thomas Aquinas. That trend continued until boundaries were changed back to Holy Trinity in 2015, 2016. This is evidence that the Falgerwood community strongly supports the school in the neighborhood. The result of this survey demonstrates that the convenience of a local school outweighs that of continuing in the Catholic school system. Community feedback that supports this view includes, "I'm signing because Holy Family School is an important part of our Falgerwood community, and the closing of it will result in the elimination of our Catholic community. Holy Family is an important part of the Falgerwood community. The closure of this school will push families to attend public schools that happen to be in our backyard, resulting in the disappearance of our Catholic community. This school has been in my parents' neighborhood, my siblings walked to the school, and now my nieces and nephews walk to the school. It is a valued center of community." In summary, we are asking trustees to turn down option 12B with respect to the closure and consolidation of Holy Family School with St. Marguerite du Ville, continuing to allow Holy Family's Catholic school to be an integral part of the Falgerwood community. By doing so, we believe we will be giving parents the convenience they seek while providing our youth the benefits of a Roman Catholic education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustees, trustee Quinn, you have a question?
Thank you for clarification through you, Madam Chair. So if you are asking us to not choose option 12B, are you recommending that we choose the other option presented to us, the consolidation of three schools into one school? Perhaps Fred could give me an update on, on what the first option is again.
Fred or Tim? Where is Fred or Tim? Tim's over there, okay. Where is Fred? Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair. The first option that we will, we have presented is the three into one. The alternative option is the 12B.
Thank you. So to the delegate then, for clarification, by saying we shouldn't choose option 12B, are you recommending we choose option 1A, which is consolidation of three schools into one in a new building at St. Michael's? Or are you asking us not to consider closing Holy Family in any way?
I'm asking not to consider closing the school, as it's a great asset to us having a school close by.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Our next delegation, 5.3, is from Mr. Mike and Pete. Mr. Denofsky and Mr. Pavasor?
First off, I'd like to say congratulations on the pronunciation of my names. That's very good.
Oh, thank you. I try. Thank you.
Did you practice that by any chance?
I don't know.
Hi, I'm Mike, and this is Pete. And we're asking the trustees to turn down option 12B with respect to the closure and consolidation of Holy Family with St. Marguerite. We're here to delegate to the boards on the topic of utilization, enrollment, and financial concerns. And just for clarification as well, we are also against the, the first option. We just didn't do too much work on that because we didn't feel that that was even probably a possibility. Our daughters currently attend Holy Family, and we know our concerns are shared by many of the other parents and members in the community, as has been demonstrated. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the initial public meeting due to illness, but I've attended every meeting since then and have participated in the online surveys. I have and strongly continue to be opposed to the closing of Holy Family. You know, the most important reason for keeping Holy Family open relates to the educational experience and safety of our children, but there's other delegations that will address those matters.
So while we acknowledge that throughout the review area of Oakville Northeast, there are enrollment concerns, and this process is necessary. However, the immediate consolidation of Holy Family is not clear. Holy Family is an energy-efficient building with a strong facility condition index, as illustrated by the school information profiles dated in September 2015. The Holy Family School is projected to have the lowest FCI over the next 10-year period of the six schools in the review area. We're talking today about doing a variation of option 12B, and we believe that it will accomplish the board's objective of reducing the underutilization in the area and reduce capital costs without adversely affecting the ongoing operating costs. We'd like to call it, this new option, 12C, and we hope that the numbering doesn't confuse anybody, but effectively, what we're asking is that we consolidate St. John's and St. Michael with the proposed boundary changes and the introduction of the French at the Our Lady Peace School, while keeping Holy Family operating and moving the gifted program to it from St. Andrew.
So this option we're proposing provides that consolidating Holy Family into St. Marguerite can remain open for future consideration if enrollment numbers go down further than proposed. So it's, it's not, you know, it's just holding off, hopefully forever, but, but, you know, it should still be left on the table, I would think. Nobody wants our children to go to a three-grade split classroom. But, you know, the numbers are not at that point, and they're not projected to be at that point. If populations continue to decline, consolidating Holy Family into St. Marguerite may not even require an addition, just some reworking of the boundaries. If, however, populations are higher than expected, then portables would be required at St. Marguerite on top of the, the addition. Option 12C eliminates the capital cost portion of option 12B. In option 12B, the long-term cost savings are attributed more towards the consolidation of St. John rather than Holy Family. While option 12B illustrates a savings on transportation due to boundary changes, 12C will reduce these transportation costs further. Moving the gifted program to Holy Family will also reduce portable costs at St. Andrew. 12C protects against the chance that the enrollment projections are wrong.
So there's not a chance that anybody's going to be able to read these numbers, but as you can sort of see, the historic versus the LTTP enrollment projections, over the past four years, the actual, the actual enrollment, sorry, for Holy Family has been higher by as much as 29 students, or 13% difference than what was previously projected. In fact, while the total area projections are fairly accurate, the individual school populations, as you know, are very difficult to predict, and it makes sense to leave room for flexibility rather than to lock into a renovation that is not necessary and costly. Any cost savings of option 12B could be hampered by increased portable costs. Consolidating St. John's into St. Michael will reduce the review area on the ground capacity of the OTG count to 2999, sorry, 2199. Based on the enrollment projections over both the five and the 10-year periods, the utilization would be within the optimal range of 90% to 125%, the majority of the time using option 12C.
Slide five here is a, was the table 26 that was presented to the, the board by the staff on February the 7th, and I was just wondering about the numbers in this table, whether they were correct or not. In the appendix of my presentation, I've got the first page of those school information profiles from September 2015, and the number for St. John's, the five-year renewal needs, on the school information profile is nearly 4 million, where on this table here, it's 2 million and almost 200,000. I understand that these can, you know, maybe these are newer numbers, so maybe it might have changed, but the 10-year number for St. John is identical to what's in the information profile. As well, the numbers for, for St. Mike's, St. Michael's, the five-year number is actually the number that's used in Holy Family's school information profile. So on Holy Family's school information profile, it lists the five-year number as 1,532,483, but that's shown as St. Michael's here. The other thing is that St. Michael's numbers on table 26 for 10-year and 15-year are actually listed on the school information profile as a five-year and 10-year numbers for that school.
So the major costs for option 12B result from the addition that needs to be built on St. Marguerite. Assuming that table 26 is correct, the majority of the long-term benefits, on the other hand, will be realized by consolidating St. John's, not Holy Family. Other than costs, taking a step away from the cost for a moment, but other than costs, major considerations should be the disruption to the students during construction, and these type of projects typically experience delays to some degree or another. Due to the property layout of St. Marguerite, and I believe this was mentioned before, the additions of the portables will likely take up prime playground space, thus impacting the children.
As can be seen here in table 26, the projected transportation costs go down in option 12B from the status quo, even after busing all of Holy Family students to St. Marguerite is factored in. This would be assumed to be from boundary changes and program changes that are also proposed. These cost savings can be increased dramatically by keeping Holy Family open and not having to bus all of these students. Further to that, by moving the gifted program to Holy Family, portable costs can be greatly reduced, if not eliminated, as the majority of the portables in the review area are actually at St. Andrew. The cost savings illustrated likely don't take into account ongoing costs of maintaining a vacant property at Holy Family, so there would be insurance costs and other types of costs to keep the building from being unsafe until it's sold.
And just lastly, to close, the enrollment projections illustrate that reducing the OTG portion represented by St. John's, along with the gifted program change, will allow for optimal utilization across the review area. Eliminating the capital costs of the St. Marguerite renovation and greatly reducing the transportation costs and portable costs all strongly favor keeping Holy Family open. This option provides flexibility if the future enrollment is significantly different than projected. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask Fred to respond to your question on slide five, part one. Fred?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just as a point of clarification on the five-year renewal number, you'll notice on table 26 at the top, as was pulled from a report, that was the Ministry of Edg- of Education number, which they had provided some updates. Now, seeing that we need to use their numbers to do our capital business cases to them, albeit ours are typically a little bit different, we want to use those to be consistent so that we're providing the same messaging. So that's why I see the discrepancy, whereas the 10 and 15 years, those are still aligned right now because we're still assessing the five-year mark.
It just seemed that, and I would have expected some discrepancies, but when some of the exact numbers were in different spots than indicated, leads me to believe that there might actually be some inputting errors on those tables.
Those would be the ones pulled directly. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Fred. Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Follow-up to Fred. Before we are asked to make a decision, could he share with us the current number of students in St. Andrew's gifted program and the projections for that program as well, please?
If you can provide that now, that's fine, but if you want to do it for the next meeting or send it out to trustees, that's also fine.
Provide me one moment here. Right now, the current projections, we, St. Andrews has been a school that typically had about one classroom of about 20 pupils. This year was an anomaly. We had a lower enrollment in grade five. We expect it to go back up near the 20s. Seeing that as a four-year program of grade five to eight, there's about a, I'd say about a max of about eight. I think Tim's got a little bit more clarification on that as well.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. With a program such as a gifted program, it is an optional program where students, identified students have the ability to opt into the program, so that number could vary from year to year.
Superintendent Brown?
Further to that, to trustee Quinn, there's two main variables that go into the program every year and both of which we have limited control over. One is we go through the process, the gifted screening process, grade four. We've had, in my tenure, as high as 4% of our grade four population identified as gifted and as low as 1.6. So it does tend to vary year to year and then of that, it still remains an option for parents. So both of those do fluctuate from year to year. We've been up against, right up against our hard number in terms of the classes and we've also had situations in the past couple of years where we've had empty places in some of the classrooms as well. So from year to year, it can fluctuate depending on the results of the gifted screening and the individual administration of the WISPS fire psych department.
Thank you. Any other questions from the trustees? No, okay. Thank you very much, Delegators. We appreciate your time, your work. Thank you. Now we have our next delegation, which is Mr. Smitschen, 5.4. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hello, my name is Paul Smitschen. I'm asking that the trustees turn down Option 12B with respect to the closure and consolidation of Holy Family School with St. Marguerite Duville. I am here to delegate to the Board of Trustees on the topic of program changes. And to clarify, I'm also against the first option also. Our personal experience with the gifted program. My wife and I have two boys, Joshua and Luke. Luke attends Holy Family in grade two. Our son Joshua is currently enrolled in grade six of the gifted program at St. Andrew. He started the gifted program in 2015. Today, Joshua enjoys the gifted program. He's been challenged to think outside of the box with the support of great teachers. However, the transition from Holy Family was slow and stressful. We attribute his difficult transition to this large size of St. Andrew's school in the sheer contrast with the tight-knit school such as Holy Family. As a result, he experienced anxiety adjusting to the program and the new people in his classroom. It has taken our son over 12 months to be comfortable in a school of nearly 800 strangers. In a very large school such as St. Andrews, the children in the gifted program can be relatively isolated from the overall population. Despite some forced integration with the regular track program, which consists of one class per day, getting to know and feel comfortable with these kids can be difficult. Our son is introverted, which is not uncommon with, in our experience with other gifted children. However, I believe that running the gifted program in a smaller school would enhance these children's ability to integrate into the new program and new school. We can offer these kids an environment to thrive socially and academically without adding undue stress of a large facility. In a small school, the children in the gifted program share one or two classes every day with virtually all the kids in their grade. The facts, St. Andrews' population is well above the on-the-ground building capacity. In fact, in 2015, it was at 132%, simply busting at the seams. This issue results in portables and increased traffic congestion in the area. The issues are ignored in Option 12B. It is important for the trustees to recognize that according to the Oakville Northeast Par Scatter Map Information Package dated November 3rd, 2016, Holy Family sends more students to the gifted program at St. Andrews than any other school, including St. Andrews itself. Our kids represent the younger demographic, years five and six of the program, grade five and six, which means they will mature in the program, whereas most of the students from St. Andrews are closer to graduation. This suggests that the program would be sustainable at Holy Family. Holy Family School's available capacity could house the gifted program at our facility. While we recognize that bringing gifted to Holy Family does not change the population of regular track kids, it does increase the overall utilization of the building to 92%, achieving the optimal school utilization of between 90 and 125%. The gifted kids not currently at St. Andrews are bused into St. Andrew's school and therefore would not be affected by busing to Holy Family School. In summary, we are asking the trustees to support bringing the gifted program to Holy Family School. While we understand that this does not change the population of the regular track program, we believe it will have the following benefits. A, increase utilization to 92% over time. This is optimal. B, locate the gifted program in a school that contributes to it the most. C, give introverted children enrolled in the gifted program the best social and academic environment to accelerate learning and personal growth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Overholt, can you talk a little bit, please, about the gifted program? Was there any consideration given to moving it to Holy Family since this gentleman indicates they have the majority of students?
Through you, Madam Chair. Through the ART Committee, it was an option that was looked at. The reason why it was an option that is not here presented was the other part of the dilemma which the gentleman brought up is the other students, the regular string students in the school. It does not address that concern that we are seeing in Holy Family plus St. Michael's and St. John's where that number of students in regards to the decline of those, it's difficult in regards to number of factors that I brought up last time, the flexibility of classes, socialization of students, the concern we're getting to, possibility of triple grades. We have, looking at the three schools this year in staffing right now, original staffing, we could be possibly without going to triple grades, overstaffed each of them by one staff member. So that is a concern and again, in terms of the students, the dynamics that exist in a small school and the lack of flexibility that's going to exist, that those students are going to be remaining with their peers throughout from kindergarten to grade eight.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustees, do you have any questions for our delegator? Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair. So for clarification, you don't want us to support Option 12B. You give us the reasons why and what other courses you would recommend, but do you have any recommendations for us by way of St. John's and St. Michael's, their amalgamation into a new building, which is part of the first application?
I agree with the, what they're calling Option 12C in the previous delegation of still combine, the other part of 12B, combining the first two schools and letting Holy Family stay where it is, but joining the gifted program in it. I don't believe that the, that the actual population is going down too much at Holy Family, if at all, and I don't actually see any danger of a three-class split in Holy Family. I'll be honest.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, then, perhaps to Fred. Without the Holy Family numbers transferring to the new school in the first option, 1A, is the building of a new school at St. Michael feasible?
Fred?
Through you, Madam Chair. If we were to combine the student populations together, I don't think it would be feasible in the ministry's eyes, given the small nature of the school, given the cost efficiencies as well. They'd probably look at and say, you can probably address most of this through existing space as we are currently doing. So I would not think that just a straight St. John's, St. Michael's consolidation would warrant a new facility in the ministry's eyes. I wouldn't think it'd be feasible.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, does, I know the January enrollment statistics just came out, but I don't have my computer on in front of me. Does anyone have those numbers handy for each of these three schools? Could they, if they have it, could they read the percentages out to me or for the audience? Should say.
Tim? Tim, you have it?
Through you, Madam Chair. In regards to percentages, just want clarification. I can give you the actual numbers and actually what would kind of be a telltale sign is the numbers coming in, in terms of kindergarten. So if we look at, I'll start with Holy Family, they have a total of 16 students coming in for junior kindergarten. Last year, they had 26. For St. John's, they both, 17 for both years, so they have 17 students coming in. And for St. Michael's, they have 13 junior kindergarten students. Last year, they had 20. So again, if that trend continues and you look at that number being each year, obviously the enrollment's going to be going down.
Madam Chair, could Superintendent Overholt also read the utilization rates, the percentage of the utilization rates for each school right now?
I don't have the utilization rates. I do have, I do have population, but Fred may have that utilization rate.
Fred, do you have the utilization rates?
Almost. I only have them for, pardon me, oh, they have them for the current year.
Okay, so could we get?
They're about, let's wait for it to load.
Maybe you could send them out to trustees?
If I recall correctly, they're in the low, the high 60s or the 70s. Sorry.
High 60s and 70s.
That's fair enough.
Okay. Trustee Danko is satisfied with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions for our delegator? No? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your time and all your work. Now we have delegation 5.5, Ms. Angus Courtney and Mr. Moreto.
Yes.
Okay. Start whenever you're ready.
Just in case, I'm Tony Moreto, not Jennifer Courtney. Unfortunately, Jennifer couldn't be here this evening.
Okay, no problem. Whenever you're ready.
Came up, so I missed. We're asking the trustees to turn down Option 12B with respect to the closure and consolidation of Holy Family School with St. Marguerite Duville. We are here to delegate to the Board of Trustees on the topic of transportation in walkable communities. The cost of transportation is covered in detail under a separate delegation. We will be speaking to, excuse me, I will be speaking to the impact of closing a school in a walkable community. We urge you to consider the benefits of a walkable, sustainable Catholic school in our community. We offer the following: energy conservation and environmental stewardship. The school board makes great motherhood statements like energy conservation and stewardship, but we would like to see the trustees uphold those principles by refusing to close a sustainable school in a walking community. Health and wellness. Promoting a healthy lifestyle is part of the Catholic education. These days, children struggle to get the minimum level of activity required to sustain a healthy lifestyle and establish good habits into adulthood. Holy Family School is a walking community. This community attracts new families because of their walkable schools. If Holy Family is closed, many of these residents may value the benefits of a walkable school community over a Catholic education. The inconvenience of busing is a major barrier for parents and many parents have expressed this concern through the public open house or survey comments. The idea of busing children and the added time to catch a bus creates another layer of stress to an already hectic routine. This may be a barrier too big to overcome for some parents and as a result, they may prefer to remain in the Folgerwood community. Reliance on a bus in the winter can be unpredictable. Again, this adds another layer of frustration to the morning commute to work. We ask you to consider the implications of busing students out of a walkable community in conjunction with other delegates, other delegations submitted in support of keeping Holy Family School open.
Thank you. Any questions from trustees? Yes? Thank you very much. All right, now we have delegation 5.6. Due to extenuating circumstances, Ms. Norman is unable to be here this evening. Ms. Ballard, who is also delegating this evening, is available to answer any questions the trustees may have. So ladies, whenever you're ready.
Support for the new build. We, the representatives of St. John's, enthusiastically support the new build. A community realizes that status quo is no longer an option and is eager for positive change. To be a viable elementary school, we need all three school communities south of Upper Middle Road to participate. While some may think that 550 students is a large population, this is not a large school, but an ideal size by both ministry and school board standards. A new build of this size provides better and more diverse opportunities for students. There is a wider variety of options for co-curricular activities, multiple classes of same grade, and the proposal to include the extended French program would bring this in-demand special stream to the area of, sorry, to the area south of Upper Middle. With a new build, opportunities for additional special programming will open up. Innovative programs such as early French immersion and STEAM would make the school and the surrounding community more attractive to parents. Building a 21st century school facility and forging a new identity is an exciting opportunity for our children today and a legacy for future students. The creation of the Oakville Northeast School is the best answer for these three schools' communities moving forward. With the existence of multi-class grades, there will be numerous opportunities for students in each grade to learn curriculum with children in their own age group. The benefits of such a classroom makeup cannot be overstated. The delivery of curriculum and the time that the classroom teacher can devote to a single grade class allows for more time and flexibility, addressing the needs of individual students and the class as a whole. In recent years, due to declining enrollment, split classes have become the norm and not the exception. Three-grade split classes are a real possibility for St. John's school. Low student enrollment numbers have unfortunately led to multiple problems for many students and their families. Here's one example. One entire grade was made up of 11 boys and one girl. This is a problem for the social development of all the children in this situation. That little girl in grade one had no choice but to seek out and create friendships with the girls in grade two. There were boys who did their best to play with her and include her in their games at recess. However, she had no other girl in her classroom to identify with on a daily basis. The unification of three school communities statistically eliminates such scenarios.
A definite benefit of the new build is the extended French program. The proposed addition of an extended French program would align programming with Holy Trinity High School within its family of schools. This will fulfill the need for Catholic-French programming south of Upper Middle Road. Additionally, it will address the issue of cross-boundary students attending a secondary school that is not their home school. For example, former St. John's students attending St. Matthews for French will likely attend French as loyola as cross-boundary students in order to stay with their peers. Extended French in this new school will keep students in their appropriate school family and foster growth at Holy Trinity. The new build will increase the opportunities for extracurricular activities. A larger student body is conducive to a variety of activities such as clubs, sports, and all the options that have not been available to our small school. the options that have not been available to our small school. The real possibility of fielding competitive teams is essential for the well-rounded development of children. The chance to represent your school is a dream for students, yet a missed opportunity for those who have graduated from underpopulated schools. In a larger school, co-curriculum programs can once again become viable. Many schools in the Haltin Catholic School Board already have these options, the existence of which they take for granted. It is time to rectify these issues for St. John, St. Michael, and Holy Family and unify them together to create multi-class grades and divisions. The Oakville Northeast School, ONES, is an opportunity to build a state-of-the-art facility which is up to standard for 21st century learning. This provides students with a technology and adaptive environment conducive to 21st century skills and competencies. Providing a physical learning environment that is flexible to the needs of the students and allows innovation in the classroom is crucial for our young learners. The new ONES building is an opportunity for the HCDSB to be leading edge in the innovative and modern learning and to execute the board's vision of the 21st century learning philosophy, which embodies creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. The new build will be an inspiring testament to all stakeholders, including parents, educators, the diocese, and the community at large. The existing school buildings south of Upper Middle Road are past their expected serviceable lifespan. The HCDSB has done an exceptional job of maintaining the current facilities, but it is no longer feasible. The survey results indicate there is a positive support from parents of all of the affected schools. Voices of all three communities are well-represented, and the significant majority, 47.5%, indicate that they liked or very much liked Option 1A. This new build offers a potential for additional programming and initiatives. The ONES is an option to implement and grow these programs. Imagine an elementary school in our board that cultivates the arts, such as drama and music, and provides creative space designed to optimize a student's exposure to the visual and physical arts. STEM programming allows for state-of-the-art science labs and technology that support the learning for our young technological innovators in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The next progression would be the creation of a facility that seamlessly adapts to the emerging STEAM program, which not only the emphasis on science, technology, engineering, and math, but also the arts and humanities. The new build offers a potential to incorporate other initiatives such as the elite athlete program and a special elementary arts stream to feed into Holy Trinity's arts programs. This will provide our children the foundation they need to discover and develop their unique God-given talents. Additionally, creating a school that enhances a connection with nature, complete with the school gardens and outdoor classrooms, will emphasize to our Catholic youth that they are the stewards of creation, caretakers of the world God created for all people. The new build supports this vision. In today's fast-paced and dynamic world, we need our children to adapt and embrace change. We respectfully ask the same of our trustees to use that same courage we ask of our children to make the brave move to move these communities together. St. John, pray for us.
Thank you very much, ladies. Trustees, do you have any questions, this delegation? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering if the families and parents at St. John had any concerns about busing, such as the Holy Family families have indicated going from a walking school to a busing school. I believe right now, St. John is mostly walking. Any concerns that families have raised about having to be bused to a different site?
I'm sorry, I think, see, do we have any concerns about the bus? Not concerned by students being bused?
I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone, please, so everyone can hear? Thank you. Just to clarify the question.
About students now having to be bused to a walkable?
No. We have, a lot of our, I don't know what the percentage is for our population, but they are bused. So we have a busing culture as well as a walking culture.
And drivers.
And drivers. Another delegation may respond to your question. Any other questions from trustees? No? Okay. Thank you very much, ladies. We appreciate your work. Thank you. Now we have 5.7, which is Jake Kerr and Eve Pollak. Elizabeth and Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this delegation, and I think that our delegation will answer your question partly. Anthony? Okay. So this delegation understands that a compromise had to be made when selecting a site for Option 1A. We understand that selecting St. Michael's School was an understandable decision only because it is located in the middle of the CEO four zone. This delegation, however, argues that St. John's site is a superior site and that it should be the very least selected for Option 12B. And for clarity, when we talk about Option 12B, it is only with respect to merging St. John and St. Michael's School. Respectably, excuse me, respectfully, we do not comment on the other schools involved in 12B. We strongly urge the trustees to amend the motion and to designate St. John's School site for the renovated Option 12B. St. John's School has six acres of land, while St. Michael has four acres of land. It would be more effective to accommodate a school population of 350 to 550 students on the additional two acres of land available at the St. John's site. It would provide more space for students during recess, allowing for an environment optimal for each division within the elementary school, as well as for space designated for our existing structured teaching program, as per Option 12B. Utilizing more space during recess would avoid unnecessary congestion and, as a result, increase safety for the children. St. John's School has an on-ground capacity of 303 students, while St. Michael has an on-ground capacity of 268. For 2016, enrollment between the two schools is 358, and the projected enrollment for 2026 is 305. If St. Michael's site is chosen for 12, for Option 12B, the school will be significantly overcapacity even in 10 years' time, while at St. John, it would be at maximum capacity. St. John's School has building area of over 38,000 square feet, while St. Michael has just over 30,000 square feet. St. John's School has 88 parking spots, while St. Michael has 73. St. John's School has eight classrooms, two kindergarten rooms, and a teacher's resource room, while St. Michael has only six classrooms, two kindergarten rooms, and no resource room. All other rooms are the same. These statistics show that St. John's School is better suited to accommodate higher student population at the outset. Currently, there is no need to resort to the use of portables. If the school population should grow due to additional programming or for whatever other reason, St. John's School property has sufficient space to accommodate that growth, whether by placing portables or by building an extension to the existing site. St. John's site offers 50% more land than St. Michael's site and the multitude of options. St. John's site is ready to accommodate Option 12B, as well as the potential to accommodate Option 1A. Within the city limits, all property owners know that the value of property lies in the land. The value of St. John's School is in the six acres that it possesses and what those six acres allow the school board to create today and in the future. These six acres give the Haltin Catholic School Board the flexibility and creativity to conceive and construct a building to meet the needs of 21st century learning today and to adapt and innovate in the future. Additionally, St. John's site is more conducive to incorporate biophilic design. The idea of connecting people to nature has become one of the most innovative design trends of modern architecture. Research has proven that our attention span and cognitive functioning improves when we come into contact with nature. Study after study has supported the fact that biophilic educational space result in improved performance and well-being of students and staff members. St. John's six acres of lush green space, foliage, and connection to natural walking trails is a rare find in today's urban education spaces. Public consultation meetings have revealed that staff feels that the narrow entrance to St. John's School is a limitation, and therefore, ARC recommends St. Michael's site for Option 12B. This delegation argues that access to the property is not a limitation, not an issue, and not a concern. As mentioned above, St. John's School has been built for a population of 303 students and has 88 parking spaces. That is significantly more than St. Michael's site. However, St. John's School has had experience with overcapacity in the past and has had at least six portables around 1988, '94. This means that significant number of students had to be bused in, and many more parents dropped off and picked up their children than would be the case if Option 12B would be implemented. When the school board made decisions to build St. John's School at its existing location, and then again to expand it and place six portables on it, the narrow entry and exit point to the school property was not an issue. On those two occasions, neither staff nor the school board felt that access to the property was a limitation. As history and comparable data show, there already is sufficient space for school buses, for drop-off and pickup, as well as for parking space at St. John's School site to accommodate large student and teacher population. St. Michael's School has been designed as a smaller school on a smaller property than St. John's School. The implementation of Option 12B at St. Michael's site will bring the school to overcapacity for at least the next 10 years. And there will be significant traffic congestion associated with that increase. The access point for school buses and drop-off is not any more practical, convenient, or safe for the students, teachers, or staff than it is at St. John's site. Whether there are two one-way driveways or one two-way driveway makes no difference on the flow of traffic in and out of the school. With that in mind, St. John's access point is similar to many schools in the area where they have one entry and one exit point. The consolidation project will inevitably increase traffic in the school area. St. John's site is nestled in a residential area where there is a low traffic flow, limited to two schools and a residential area. School-related traffic can be pointed in a specific directions to improve the flow. In contrast, St. Michael's site is located on a feeder street amidst four other schools, two churches, and a residential community. College Park Transportation Study, conducted by the town of Oakville, measured traffic in the area. The final report suggested, recommended innovations and implemented various solutions. The study shows that main roads, as well as feeder roads, are experiencing heavy flow and traffic during peak hours, and that there is particularly heavy congestion around the school system. And that the five-year collision history documents 27 collisions in College Park, all of them either on Sixth Line or east of Sixth Line. To address these issues, the study, oh, excuse me, just on that point on traffic and collisions, three collisions have happened directly in front of the St. Michael's School. Just to point out. To address these issues, the study recommends improving bicycling network, approaching school boards to implement active and safe routes to school programs, and relocating school guards in order to lower congestion. It should be noted that since major, since these major concerns and recommendations have been addressed, a new school is in the process of being added to the community and will therefore put additional pressures on the transportation system. Increasing St. Michael's school population will add to that traffic congestion even more. Furthermore, it should be noted that according to the transportation study, and I quote here, "No comment concerning St. John's Elementary School have been received to date. No operational or safety issues were identified during the field investigations or in-office review. Therefore, no recommended improvement options are proposed at this time." End of quote. Meanwhile, the transportation study identified excessive speeds in the area of St. Michael's School as an issue of concern, and that is despite pre-existing speed bumps along Sewell Drive. Considering that an independent transportation study conducted on behalf of the town of Oakville found no limitations or any evidence of concern regarding St. John's School, the trustees and the school board should feel confident that St. John's site is a suitable site to host Option 12B, as well as 12, excuse me, as well as 1A. Facts show that there is no issue with access to the school property, traffic, or safety with respect to St. John's site, and that Option 12B can be, come, excuse me, can come to fruition on St. John's grant. This delegation has presented overwhelming evidence, supported by reliable data, that indicate that St. John's School is the superior site, and that St. John should be nominated for Option 12B, as well as for Option 1A. St. Michael's site offers limited and complicated access to the school and has no benefits over St. John's site. Option 12B would not be well-suited for our students, and we cannot support this option at the proposed site. We need a long-term solution, not a band-aid solution. We will support Option 12B only at St. John's site.
Excuse me, you have exceeded your 10-minute limit. Are you close to finishing?
I am finished. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your consideration, and St. John, pray for us.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Trustees, do you have any questions? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. One item that you do not bring up is the location of St. Michael adjacent to a parish. That seems to be the number-one concern we hear around this table, although it hasn't prevented us from possibly closing St. James next to St. James Parish. But let me tell us what your delegation thinks about the need to be connected to our parish.
Thank you for that question. It is a very important issue. Absolutely, we recognize that. St. John's School community has had a very positive and enriching relationship with the church ever since the school was founded in 1969, and looks forward to maintaining and cultivating this relationship into the future. St. John's School community welcomes both the church and St. Michael's School at the St. John's site. We have read the delegations before coming here. We were expecting this question to be asked of us, and we've prepared a little bit of, thought out the response. It is with great disappointment to learn, or read the letters, the letters, that as a school without the church next to it, St. John's School is less worthy of accommodating students and providing Catholic education. It is disappointing that decisions about the education and the future of our children are made based on the image and perception projected to the outside world rather than based on what is best for our children. We carry God in our hearts and minds, and our minds, and not in the buildings that surround us. There are many Catholic churches in the town of Oakville that do not have a school next to it. Not every church needs adjacent school, and not every school needs an adjacent church. For example, St. Gregory's School on Danza is numerous churches along Truffaut Guard. An image of an inadequate school with substandard and poor reputation is not a good image for the church or for the Catholic education. Option 12B with no French programming will continue the path of attrition and lead to a closure of that school anyway. We need a long-term solution, not a band-aid solution. And if that means that we need to separate from the existing parish, we are prepared to take that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Superintendent Overhold, could you please just elaborate on the rationale for choosing this particular site for 1A?
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair. We certainly recognize the art committee that both sites had many benefits to it. It was a matter of going through all the criteria and looking as a committee as to what they believed were critical criteria that we felt one site had over the other one. I guess acknowledge the fact that both schools, St. John's and St. Michael's, at one point in time were bigger in size and were able to handle the populations that were at that school. So certainly not arguing the point that the school site certainly can handle the populations of both St. Michael's and St. John's as they had in the past. I guess it's a matter of the art committee looking at the criteria, and there's four specific criteria in regards to Option B that they looked at, that they felt as though St. Michael's was the one that kind of just... St. Michael's was the one that kind of just outweighed some of the other options for St. John, from St. John's. And they were, obviously beside a parish was a factor. We certainly looked at that. The fact that we agree that you don't necessarily have to be beside a church in order for a Catholic education to occur, however, when the ability to be beside a church is available, we felt as though that is something we need to keep into consideration. The overflow parking that the church provides allowed for additional parking as well as additional drop-off areas that was able to be utilized. The double entrance was a factor that it had over St. John's. And the last criteria was the cost of the AODA upgrades of the building. St. John's was significantly higher than St. Michael's. So those were the key factors that we looked at.
Thank you. Any other questions from the trustees? No? Okay. Thank you very much, ladies. We do appreciate your work and your time. Thank you. We have Ms. Silbera and Ms. Zalano.
Respectable members of the board and Oakville trustees, good evening. The St. John's school community is optimistic...
Yeah, you need to be a little bit closer, we can't...
Right now?
That's better. Thank you.
The St. John's school community is optimistic about the possibility of a state-of-the-art new school option 1A because the new school will offer a modern infrastructure with 21st century learning and introduces a new extended French immersion program, meeting the evolving needs and expectation of our future learners. This is further supported by the survey results of the PAR school community, where 47.5% of the online respondents are in favor of the new school option 1A. We are here to propose French programming for the renovated school option 12B. The proposed renovated school option 12B combines students from St. John, including the structured teaching classroom, and St. Michael's into a renovated school on the current St. Michael's school site with boundary changes. This option places two school communities into one existing building that has outlived its natural life cycle of 40 years. The focus of this delegation is to emphasize the non-sustainability of student enrollment and student retention at the school in the absence of a special program, in particular a French program. From the recent survey results, 43.16% of the online respondents were not in favor of the renovated school option 12B.
We strongly recognize the need to consolidate the two schools from a financial perspective, emotional well-being, overall social development, school competitiveness, and involvement in extracurricular activities that can be achieved through higher enrollment numbers. Within the vicinity of St. John's, there are public schools, two of which offer extended French, and one offers core French at Grade 1 and Grade 4 respectively. In addition, within the CEO4 College Park boundaries, the Ecole Élémentaire du Chen offers French programming through Concierge Collège Viamond, and more recently, the Viamond Board has received 12.9 million from the Ministry of Education for the new building in Oakville for Ecole Secondaire Gâteon-Javet, which will be a new French-language middle and secondary school slated to open September 2017. This new French school will provide improvised facilities and enhanced learning opportunities for 392 students in Oakville from Grade 7 to 12. The area south of Upper Middle is becoming a hub for French education. The introduction of Catholic French programs such as early French immersion or extended French will give Catholic families in the neighborhood an option and make our school more attractive within the community at large. As it relates to St. John's, declining student enrollment occurs in two stages related to the lack of French programming. A significant number of parents elect to transfer their children from St. John's at Grade 1 in favor of early immersion offered through the public board at a neighborhood school. A large percentage of parents also transfer their children in Grade 5 to the extended French program offered at a Catholic school outside their school boundaries. This also impacts the overall invol, sorry, enrollments because these same families choose to transfer siblings to keep their children together in a single school. Currently, there is no Catholic elementary school that offers French programming in northeast Oakville, south of Upper Middle Road.
Student enrollment projections over a 10-year period for the combined St. John and St. Michael's student population under the renovated school option will still yield a small school with the same systemic issues that each of these schools independently face today due to the lack of French programming in the Catholic system, south of Upper Middle Road. When families elect a neighborhood, the main considerations are the proximity to a school, programs offered at the school, and the school reputation. The renovated school option implemented as-is will not hold any appeal to new families that settle in these areas. The combined school will continue to witness student attrition and decline enrollments at Grade 1 and Grade 5 with families leaving the Catholic education system for French programming with the public board. This delegation strongly recommends early French immersion starting in Grade 1 or extended French program beginning in Grade 5. The PAR represents an opportunity to fulfill the desire for local Catholic families to enroll their children in a Catholic school that is in their neighborhood and also offers French programming rather than reaching out to a public school system or cross-boundary schools to fulfill those desires.
To keep up with our public and French both counterparts, French programming south of Upper Middle Road in the CEO4 boundaries is necessary. The St. John's school community does not want a temporary solution. It wants a long-term solution with student retention and sustainability. Thank you for your attention and support.
Thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate all your work. Are there any questions from trustees? No questions? No questions? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Thank you. Number 5.9, and that is Mrs. Boland and Mr. Benau. Benau?
Good evening. I'm Monica Boland.
I'm Benjamin Benau.
Our school communities stand together to show that we recognize that change is needed. I'm representing St. John's, and Ben is representing St. Michael's. We support the intention to enhance the existing educational experience for our children now and in the future. Having a larger population of students and families will enrich the intellectual, social, physical, and spiritual development of our children. We identify the following key elements for the successful implementation of the accommodation process: school population, traffic and transportation, and programming.
Both the new building and renovation options have benefits with an increased number of students and families. While having a small school have many advantages, it also has challenges that are overcome with a larger student population. This year's early registration process to date has yielded 16 students for St. John's, 12 for St. Michael's, and 12 for Holy Family. Altogether, these numbers create a significant class of JKs. This is evidence that combining the schools is beneficial and gives us hope for the future education of these students. A community with more students and teachers creates the opportunity for children's increased intellectual development and support of their learning by appreciating diverse learning styles and similar common interests, talents, and hobbies. The children will have the opportunity to find like-minded learners in a larger community. It also creates the opportunity for children to increase their social skills with expansion of the school community. Exposure to other students and their families provides for more social interactions and the possibility of numerous and diverse friendships. The fact that greater number of pupils create the possibility for them to choose friends and not to be limited to one or two friendships by the reality of low enrollment. The possibility to reduce the concurrence of split classes to aid in more natural social development and thus avoiding two or three grades in one class. It also creates the option for children's increased physical growth through the greater availability and participation in sports teams, clubs, and extracurricular activities. In addition, it creates the opportunity for children to increase their spiritual growth by experiencing more examples of Christian living. Regardless of traffic and transportation, there will be a major impact on transportation congestion when the school population increases. Challenges need to be considered and overcome especially for those students who currently walk to school, for the families that currently drive, and also for the students that take the bus, the school bus. We feel it's important to consider expanding the capacity and the quality of both services to overcome the traffic and congestion challenges, which in turn may help promote increased bus use and decrease individual car traffic.
We would like the board to concretely address the following questions as they are key for a successful change. How can elementary students safely cross major streets and high school campuses? How much effect does the staggering of bell-tines actually have? How can the bus routes and schedules be adapted to cover the school boundaries and busy streets? All of these congestion issues need to be addressed in more detail. The new build 1A option brings much-needed programming into our school community, and we greatly appreciate this. However, the renovated option does not address special programming to bring added value to the school and the surrounding community. We feel strongly that additional programming must be offered to our students. Without extra programming offered south of Upper Middle, we will lose students to the programming offered by our neighborhood public board. Today, the public board in the area offers elementary and secondary French programming. Additionally, if we do not offer some special programming, at best, we may keep the enrollment numbers steady, but over time, our numbers will likely become critical once again. We appreciate that tonight's meeting is not to determine programming options, but we want to convey that we strongly feel that if the renovated option is put in place, that it must include special programming. We would like the board to seriously consider programs that are already offered in other areas of Oakville in our Catholic schools, such as extended French, early French immersion, and gifted programming. We also urge the board to consider exciting new possibilities for both the new build and the renovated option: programs such as an elite athlete program, an arts program consisting of drama, dance, visual arts, and music, and/or a science and technology program such as STEM (science, technology, engineering, and math). A final consideration would be a STEAM program, one that combines science, technology, engineering, and math with the arts. This is a great opportunity for the Halton Catholic District School Board to become the leader in Ontario, propelling our students from the information age to the innovation age. In conclusion, we recognize the challenge to address the need to enhance the current education conditions of our communities. We strongly request a change that includes added-value programming. This would really make a difference in supporting enrollment in the long term while building a stronger school community for our Catholic families.
Regardless of the outcome, we understand our communities may be joining together in one building and look forward to our children learning and growing together in our faith. We will continue our spirit of cooperation and mutual respect for the uniqueness of each school's culture and needs in line with our Christian values. Thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you very much. Trustees, do you have any questions for our delegation? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering, we're being asked to choose between one or the other. Does your delegation support option 1 or option 1A or 12B amongst the two?
You know, the point of this delegation was basically to outline those common points, regardless of the option. We recognize there is a need for change, and all those key elements that we were just mentioning, it's a key, regardless of the option.
Thank you. Any other questions, trustees? No? Thank you very much to our delegators. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, at 5.10, and we have, is it Mr. Perry?
Hi. My name is Byron Perry. I have three children at the St. Mike's School, which I brought here tonight, actually, kicking and screaming. I'm going to be addressing option 12B, specifically St. Mike's and St. John's issue. I won't be talking about the other schools. So thanks for the opportunity to come here this evening and talk about such an important and emotional issue. As parents, we all know that the closing or moving of a beloved school is a difficult decision for the board. We want what's best for our children, including the convenience of a school close to home and the loving community that thrives there. We don't want to see that end. Let me briefly say how lucky and blessed we are to have the Catholic school system. It provides our children with a worldview in which to assess and make decisions on what's right and wrong in their lives. Most importantly, it creates a feeling of a loving community. Having had children in the other school system, I can tell you this sense of belonging is much, much stronger in this system. Anyway, I want you to consider three reasons why the best option for our children is 12B. I base this on the fact that having a church beside our school, our children's school, is an incredibly, incredibly important key to the happiness and future of our children. Firstly, a church beside our children's school gives them a safe Catholic place to be every day. If you look around, you will see that safe places to practice our faith are in fact shrinking. They are now confined to our homes, our church, and our schools. Our school property, I should say. These last two, these last two are both under attack almost daily from people who want to end the Catholic school system. These are powerful forces against us. And to me, to my mind, this isn't right. Millions of Catholics who have built Canada continue to do so. We are the ones volunteering at shelters and the church, that the church and its members run. We built hospitals, schools, and even universities in many places. Nevertheless, we are being forced into the wilderness. Therefore, our children need a strong Catholic center. A place to go that's safe, where somewhere to be proud of who they are, what we've done, and what our children would do in the future. We need to let them know that although society is less and less appreciative towards us, at the very least, we have a school, they have a school and church to go to where their beliefs are accepted in love. A church and school side by side is the center of safety for them. The second reason that having a church beside a school is a key to our children's happiness is that it is a daily reminder of who they are. I think almost all parents will agree that there are lots of distractions in this world for our children. Many of them are not good or healthy. The list is long. YouTube, Facebook, movies, commercials on TV, even ads at the bus stop do not represent our values. In fact, outside our homes, our church and school are the only place our children are reminded of what's right and wrong in a society that tells them nothing is wrong and everything you do is good. Once several years ago, I was on a bus in Toronto. The majority of the young people, all teenagers, were on the bus, were dressed, I would think, inappropriately for their age. They played their music loud, they talked loud and aggressively, and were disrespectful of the other passengers. I don't know if they were Catholic or not. Anyway, at one stop, another young teenager got on and sat near the other teenagers who paid no mind. He wasn't disheveled or rude to the other passengers, he just sat there quietly and confidently. There was something different about him. A few minutes later, I found out what that difference was. As we passed a Catholic church, he made the sign of the cross, something many people do as an acknowledgement that the Eucharist, the body of Christ, is in that building. As soon as he did this, all the other teenagers turned silent as if reminded to behave. They did not make fun of him, nor did they continue to be aggressive to the rest of the passengers. In fact, the rest of the trip, they were quite quiet. That boy acted as a role model for these children, these teenagers. The boy wasn't ashamed nor afraid to show his faith. That boy was a product of the Catholic... That boy was a product of the Catholic school system, as evidenced by his Catholic uniform he was wearing. This is the power, this is the, this is the power just the mere presence of a church can have on our children. A church beside our school can give all our children best strength, confidence, and joy. It reminds them of who they are and what they believe in and to be proud of it. Our world needs more people like that boy, and our children desperately. A church beside that school can help do that. The third reason it's important to have a church right beside our school, option 12B, is because it gives our children daily access to God and to God's house. The elementary school years can be wonderful, happy, and loving, period, in the life of our children. There can also be a time of difficulty in which our children need to talk to God. Studies show that we are built to seek a higher power and a love that is perfect, that is something beyond human love. Our brains are hardwired to seek God. Studies also show that those who have strong faith lead much happier lives. We need to give this gift to our children. They need a place to direct this need. That place is God's house. By having a church right beside their school, our children can develop confidently, knowing that God loves them and that God is literally just a few steps away from them. It's like going to a friend's home. They are always welcome. No matter how difficult or wonderful life gets for our children, they will know they always have a place to go to recharge, or calm their stressful soul, or just to express gratitude for God for what they, what they have. To our fam, to the families of St. John's, I know this is an emotional issue. You've built an incredible and loving community at St. John's. Option 12B will not end that, it will just expand it. Your community will grow even bigger and stronger by the addition of more children and a church at the St. Mike's property. Therefore, I urge the board to support option 12B because you'll be giving our children an incredible and lifelong gift. God bless you and hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from trustees? No questions? All right. Can I ask Superintendent Overholt, could you please clarify the way in which the options will be presented at the next meeting on March 7?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. As was presented in the staff report last board meeting, there will be a preferred option that we will be presenting, that is 1A, where that's the three schools into one. We're asking trustees to vote on that option initially. If it is approved at the trustee level, that is one that would have to go to the ministry in regards to funding for the school consolidation and closure, to get funds to be able to build a new school. We're asking, if that was the case, for trustees to also vote on the other options of 12B, which would be broken into two parts. Because if we do not get the option 1A approved, first of all, at the trustee level and then at the ministry level, then we're left with nothing. And to have this community to go through the process again, we don't think it's fair. And to have an alternative options where the costs would not be as great that we would not have to go through the ministry, we're asking trustees to make a decision on that so that if we do not get funded by the ministry, again, if trustees approve option 1A, then we would possibly have a backup if trustees voted in favor of 12B. And again, 12B is going to be broken down into two sections, the St. John, St. Michael's, and the St. Marguerite Holy Family.
Thank you very much. Trustee Marai.
Thanks for your delegation today. I think you're bringing up a very valid point about the value of having a church next to one of our schools. But if one option has three school communities going next to a church versus one that has two going next to a church, wouldn't you support, by your logic, having more students at a school beside a church as St. Marguerite doesn't have a church beside it?
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Okay, Paul. Any other questions to our delegator? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Appreciate all your work. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank all who delegated here today. It's a tremendous amount of work, time, and energy, and we know that you have other things on your agenda, so we certainly do appreciate that. We can give you the official response to the delegation in a few minutes, but I think you know that it's going to the board at the next board meeting, on Drury Lane, outside on Drury Lane. So, we will now move trustees to number 6.1, approval of the minutes of the February 7th regular board meeting. And I do have an amendment, I believe, to those minutes, and that would be on page four of your flyer, not your flyer, your minutes. Item 8, under Action Items, it's the very bottom of the page, under Civis Day for Life, and it's third paragraph up. I will read it to you so that you know what that is. Trustee Carabella declined trustee Marai's suggestion that money be raised for students within the Halton Catholic District School Board. The amendment would restrict donating to charities such as Shiva Homes, Inc. The board is, I can't read that. The suggestion is that it would be coming back to the board, oh yes, it would be coming back to the board with regard to how the finances were spent at the end of each year. So, you would want a report back to the board indicating how the finances are spent each year. Is that correct, trustee Marai?
Yeah, so to clarify, that wasn't an amendment, and secondly, the
It was a suggestion.
The second point was an amendment, which was to bring back financial report to the board.
That was an amendment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just the last part there about the student trustees were in agreement that a student from each secondary school will be on the committee in order to have a voice on how funds should be spent. So it's not that they would be on the committee, but they're represented by their teacher representative to the committee.
Yes, because those are meetings that are held during the day.
Correct.
All right, so can we make that amendment? Okay, we'll make that amendment. Any other changes to those minutes? Okay, no? Can I have a mover, please, to pass this minutes, approve the minutes? Trustee Quinn, moving, seconded, please. Trustee Carabella, all in favor? Thank you. All right. Summary of items, from the outstanding items for the previous meetings, page 92, and those are two items, the status is approval is amended, on integrated accessibility standards and purchasing policy. All right? So that is that. Moving on to the action items, the response to the delegations. According to board policy, we are required to provide a motion for agenda items 5.1 to 5.10. A decision on the matter at the same meeting, referral of the matter to a future meeting, a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting, or to receive for information. And I need a mover. Trustee Quinn, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to move that we defer the response until the next meeting, at which we'll make the vote, and the delegates will have their response in contact.
Have their response at the next meeting, thank you. A second, please. Trustee Marai, any questions to that? All right, all in favor? Okay. So, thank you very much, and thank you very much to all who came. You're most welcome to spend the rest of the evening with us, as we have more to do, but we'd like to thank you for your tremendous work and energy. It's a big job, and we do appreciate your time. And we will have, hopefully, a decision for you at the next board meeting. You are welcome to attend. It's going to be here? Oh, my goodness. It's going to be here at Holy Trinity, so we look forward to seeing you then. Okay, thank you. So, now we are moving on, trustees. Policy, 8.2, policy 1-21, corporate and community investment in education. Trustee Danko.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to present policy I-21, corporate and community invested in education, for approval as amended by a recommendation from the policy committee. I'd like to move this policy.
Okay, thank you. A second, please, for the policy. Trustee Marai, any questions to that policy? Okay. All in favor? Thank you. 8.3, policy 3-13, corporate purchasing card distribution and usage. Trustee Danko.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move policy 3-13, corporate purchasing cards that the Halton Catholic District School Board accepts the recommendation of the policy committee and approve this policy as amended.
Thank you. Can we have a mover, please? Trustee Rowe, seconded by trustee Michael. Any questions to that? No? All in favor? Thank you. I get one.
Opposed.
Opposed, yes, yes. I saw you. I did see you. I'm just fading a bit here. Okay. Sorry?
Do we have a recorded vote?
The director's doing it, sorry. Am I going too fast? Sorry. So everybody else was in favor, and we have one opposed, correct?
I was in favor.
Okay, I'll just give you a minute there, sorry. 8.4, policy 1-06, delegation to the board. Trustee Danko.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to move this policy I-06, delegation to the board, to get it on the floor, so I'd like to move the policy.
Okay. Okay. A second, please, trustee Michael. Questions to the policy? All in favor?
I'd like to move an amendment to the policy. Now, this policy was reviewed by our records and privacy officer, and the addition of the publication of names of delegates who were not approved to present at a board meeting, that's considered, that it doesn't give their consent for their name and their delegation to appear in the minutes in the public record. So, I'm moving that we withdraw the highlighted portion, the bullet.
It's on the back of the sheet, and it's just above the recommendation.
Yeah, it's just on above the recommendation. To remove that line where it says, "Names of declined delegates will not be published." So I'm moving that, moving to amend the policy by removing that line from it entirely.
Thank you. So you're moving that. A second for the amendment. Trustee Carabella, thank you. All in favor of the amendment?
Well, I think you can discuss the amendment at this point.
Sorry, discussion. Trustee Marai.
I thought the whole point of this was kind of to ensure some sort of transparency in the process, and I understand where trustee Danko's coming from on this, but I think there could be a more satisfactory way to go about it. For example, asking them to provide, if you're going to submit a delegation, that you, you know, sign a form saying that you're fine with it being disclosed in public. Obviously, if you want to make a delegation, you know it's going to be public anyway. So just simplifying the language when they actually apply itself would accomplish, I think, this transparency goal and also accomplish what trustee Danko's trying to.
I need to speak against that, just to clarify. Go ahead, trustee Quinn, maybe you're going to do this.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I concur with trustee Marai. The purpose of having these names published was so that everyone in the community would have an understanding that the board had made a decision, a conscious decision, to not allow someone to speak. So I thought that was a need of transparency. So if we went, if we took the route of just publishing everyone whom had requested to speak, and then, and then subtracting those delegates who did appear, then you would know who was not allowed to speak. So I don't understand how the MIPA rules apply when someone has submitted a public letter to our board and put their name on it, why we just wouldn't publish it in our, in our minutes, and that way, everyone who applied would be in the public record, and everyone who spoke would also be in the public record.
Trustee Marai?
And further to that, there's numerous other ways we could solve this problem. For example, I think one of the issues was we wanted transparency at the trustee level to know if the chair was suggesting some shouldn't be able to speak, and at least have that information brought to us. So another way, if you're concerned, if you don't think that's a satisfactory way, you could also put it in camera to the trustees of the next board meeting. I'd prefer the first option, but there are numerous ways you could accomplish this without just striking it down completely.
My only concern, as it was developing conversation here, trustee Marai, I believe you said that we could put people, have asked people if they would agree to have their name published, if they had submitted sheets. But those people, when they agree to have their name listed, may not know whether or not they're going to be approved to speak. So they, for instance, I may decide I want to speak on something, and I'm assuming that I'm going to be granted that right, but because of my material, you don't think that's appropriate, so I'm denied that right, but I've already signed the form to say you can use my name, but I signed it on the thought that I would be allowed to speak. So, you need to include that too somewhere along the line. Do you want to send this back to policy for some more discussion? Tina?
Tim. He's not here. Through you, Madam Chair. Just a question to trustees. Is the intent to get it is for the names, is it more for the topics and reason for decline? And if it's for topics and reasons of decline, that we don't have a concern of publishing the names, we can just put that information down? If it's, I don't know what the names, the purpose of the names, if that's what you want, but again, if it's to get the information as to why and what the topics were, that would be easily doable.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. In the recommendations that were provided to us, we were concerned that the person being denied could be, could experience some sort of public embarrassment in being refused to delegate at our board. But in the, I think transparency outweighs that, and I think maybe we should bring it back for further discussion of policy. If to find a way that we can maintain transparency without circumventing the municipal codes or freedom of information, or whatever the public law is.
Okay, so we need to have some more conversation with this, so I guess I will ask trustee Danko, would you, would you withdraw your amendment and your motion?
No, I think that if the trustees want to bring it back to policy, they should defeat the amendment and then defeat the policy, and it would go back to policy.
So trustee Danko made the move on the amendment, and who seconded it?
Helena.
Helena, okay. So, any other comments towards the amendment? Yes, Helena?
Well, if we're talking about that, like, other ways, we could bring it back as, I'm thinking that person who was denied the chance to delegate can write a letter to the board, and it would be in our correspondence if they wrote a letter to the chair and to the Director of Education, Secretary of the Board, that there, what they would like to have said would be there as the letter, as a correspondence.
Greater onus on them.
Pardon?
Greater onus on them.
Greater onus on them, true.
Okay. So, any other one, any other person wishing to speak to the amendment? All right, so we're going to vote on the amendment. Yes? All right, everybody okay with that? Okay?
Sure.
Okay. So your amendment, could you repeat it again, please, Anthony?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My amendment was to remove the statement under the requirements, bullet number three on page 2 of 3, or page 102 of the package. Bullet number three says, "Any delegation declined by the chair of the board will be brought to the attention of the trustees and be included in the board package." So I'm, my amendment is to remove that, remove that statement from the policy.
Okay. So we're voting either remove the statement or decline to remove the statement?
For clarification, Madam Chair, if the trustees wish to send this policy back to the committee, then they should vote, they should be opposed to my amendment, and they should be opposed to the overall policy.
Trustee Quinn?
I am opposed and will be voting against the next vote, should we have one, so that we can bring it back to policy.
Okay. Manuela?
I'm also opposed.
Opposed. Trustee Rowe?
Opposed.
Christina?
Opposed as well.
Trustee Danko is opposed.
I'll be opposed.
Okay. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so the amendment is defeated, and we are back to the policy, the original motion.
Yes, Madam Chair. Now, the main motion is the policy itself, unamended. So if trustees wish to approve, they can, otherwise, if they wish to defeat this policy, they'll go back to the committee for further discussion.
Okay. So the motion is then, just a second, Paul. The motion is that, you made the motion, so repeat it again?
Well, now the main motion is the policy itself, that's what's on the floor. So it is whether to approve the policy unamended.
Okay. Are you taking a stance on that?
Well, if, if trustees wish to pass, pass it unamended, they, they can. But if they wish to see this policy go, go back to the committee.
All right.
They should defeat the policy here.
Your motion is that it go back to committee?
I, it's the will of the board, not me.
Thank you. Yes, yes, it's your motion.
Madam Chair, I have an amendment to make and that would be to change the line, "Any delegation declined by the Chair of the Board will be brought to the attention of trustees and be included in the board package." And amend that to, "Any delegation declined by the Chair of the Board will be brought to the attention of trustees and be included in the in-camera board package."
Okay, so we have Anthony saying, "Send it back to policy" and we're having Paul putting an amendment in saying that we, it would be included in the in-camera portion of the meeting. So we have to vote on the amendment. Do we have a second for the amendment? Jane, okay. Questions? Anthony?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd be, I'd prefer that we not vote on or pass that amendment right now and discuss it further and in depth in, in a new policy committee.
Okay. Anthony?
Madam Chair, it's perfectly fine to discuss this amendment here. Trustees could do it here or they could do it back at the Policy Committee. By all means, they can either vote in favor of trustee Marai's amendment or they can send it, can continue sending it back to Policy Committee. It's going to be up to the, to the will of the board here.
Yes. Anthony?
Through you, Madam Chair. My concern is that if we bring it back into camera, then we are removing that transparency that we're, that we were aiming for as we would no longer be able to discuss it once it was a flag to us in camera. So that's why I would like to have further discussion, perhaps a presentation from senior staff as to the legal requirements that they were concerned about and have a discussion in the policy session.
Okay. So we're voting right now on trustee Marai's amendment for the information to go to in-camera. So trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
You read them. Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
Opposed.
Trustee Danko?
Opposed.
Christina?
Opposed.
Trustee Rowe?
Opposed.
Manuela?
Opposed.
Trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
Okay.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Opposed. I think it's two in favor. And so it, the amendment has died.
So, Madam Chair, we're back to the main motion as the policy. So you can call either further debate or call a vote.
Do we need any further debate or can we just vote on the, the motion that says we're going back to Policy Committee with this particular policy?
Point of order, Madam Chair. I, I don't think it necessarily goes back to Policy Committee unless we, we say so. So this is a-
Didn't you say, "Send it" in your motion? You gave both. Make a decision, Anthony.
The main, the main motion is the policy on the table, unamended. So if we defeat the policy here, it will automatically go back to policy.
Yes.
We'll bring it back up.
All right. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
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 In favor. Opposed?
Opposed.
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 I'm sorry, Helena?
Opposed.
Thank you. Five, five are opposed.
And Arlena's away.
Arlena's away. Okay. Okay, so the opposed team wins, so to speak. Okay, so we're moving that back to policy. Is that correct?
Yes.
We're done with that one. Good.
We're just getting started.
Yeah, we are. We are. Number 8.5, Policy I-23, Catholic School Councils and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee. Yes, trustee Danko, you're on.
Yes, Madam Chair. Policy I-23, as you mentioned, is Catholic School Councils and Catholic Parent Involvement Committees. And so I'd like to move the policy and bring it as amended by the Policy Committee and bring it for, move it at this policy, at this meeting.
Okay, thank you. A second, please. Trustee Rowe, any discussion? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I did go through both. I, we didn't have the procedures attached, but I clicked and there's something that I did notice that I think our schools are already doing, but I think that could be good if it's added in here. And that is, under the requirements for, under the requirements, maybe a last bullet could be that, "At the beginning of each school year, the Catholic Parent Involvement Committee and each Catholic School Council shall state their mission, their current membership, and executive body contact information to their respective parent body to, for ease of communication or for," actually, you don't have to say that. Just, the idea is that, that the schools know their, who their chair and vice-chair is and their, the mission of the Catholic School Council and their contact information so that the parents can readily have that access, that information available. And at CPIC also would then, I think it's like a, an information piece each year that helps parents, new parents coming into the school, understanding CPIC. Could be in their newsletter, it could be an announcement. But some, some sort of communication at the beginning of each year stating who they are, their purpose, and their current membership and contact information.
Thank you. Superintendent Cipriano?
We have to have that seconded, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry? Oh, we haven't got a second? Okay, sorry, Paul. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Cipriano's going to speak to that?
Through you, Madam Chair. Although not in the policy, I believe, and I don't have the language in front of me, I believe it's in the Education Act that, that a principal is required to provide to their community at the beginning of each school year precisely what trustee Carabella's asked for. The, the Catholic School Council parent makeup, who they are, their contact information. However, I don't believe it asks for a mission statement or what their goals are for the year. Our Catholic School Councils are required as part, once again, it's written in our, our binder. I, I don't have the exact language, our resource binder for our Catholic School Councils regarding communicating to their, to their greater school communities their, their goals for the year. And they are to submit that to, and present it on, on their school website. But it's not in the policy, not that prescriptive in the policy, no.
Okay. I have seen it on the websites. Yes?
Through you, Madam Chair. Also, councils wouldn't be established until about the beginning of September. So, or I'm, I'm sorry, October. So it would be a little further on than at the beginning.
Yes, Helena?
I do acknowledge that this is going on and, and this is happening and they're stating that. And I'm sure that when the council gets elected, that it's, it's communicated to the parents. I just noticed that it wasn't in the policy. I thought it would be an important-
Would you, are you making an amendment to the policy?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And is there a second on the amendment?
Yeah, it was Paul.
Sorry, you did. Yes, you did, Paul. Any further conversation to the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment? Okay, let's go around.
Jane and Mark are opposed?
Opposed.
Yes, that's it. Okay, so that passes. So we're going back to the policy itself? We had a mover and a second on the policy?
We did. We're at the main motion now as amended.
Sorry?
We're on the main policy now as amended.
Yes. Any discussion on the main policy? Okay. All in favor? Trustee Quinn? Manuela? Trustee Rowe? Christina? Anthony? Susan? Just about everybody. Everybody in favor? Okay, a little bit of favor. Thank you very much. And tomorrow at Queen of Heaven, we have the School Council Parents Meeting, this Councilor Chair's meeting, and so that will be brought up there too. It's on the agenda. I believe I'm saying something about it. Yes, okay. All right, Policy 8.6, I'm sorry, item 8.6, Policy 4-02, Outdoor Facility Enhancements, Maintenance and Security. Trustee Danko?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Policy 4-2 in for, to be approved by the board for first reading.
Thank you. Seconded by trustee Rowe, thank you. Any questions, discussion to that particular policy? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm looking for clarification as to whether a specific fencing policy is going to come up following this, or are we deferring all decisions being made on fencing to staff if this policy is approved?
Tim, you're talking about fencing?
Through you, Madam Chair. The, if this is approved, fencing and the in-ground playground would be looked at as procedures that would fall under this policy.
Okay, it will become a procedure. Trustee Quinn? Any other questions? We're still with the main motion, first reading? Okay, so all in favor? Trustee Carabella? Ingrid? Trustee Michael? Trustee Marai? Trustee Trites?
Anthony's in the room.
Anthony, okay, opposed. Okay, Anthony, thank you. All right, that one passes. And I think that's the end of our policy. So thank you so much and thank you, Anthony, for all your work on getting those to us. 8.7, Religious Education Resource Selection, Superintendent Pocassan.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Purpose of this report is to recommend the purchase of the Grade Four Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ Complete Print and Digital District Implementation Package to support the implementation of the Ontario Catholic Elementary Curriculum Policy Document, Grades One to Eight Religious Education. Trustees have before them the necessary background information as well as in the remarks, the components of the Grade Four program with all of the inclusions. The recommendation is to purchase the Growing in Faith, Growing in Christ Comprehensive Resource Package as the approved Grade Four Religious Education Program resource with the intention of continuing to purchase grade-level resources up to Grade Eight over a four-year period. This will ensure that the new catechetical learning and teaching resources for all Halton Catholic Elementary Schools, Grades One to Eight, align with the Ontario Catholic Elementary Curriculum Policy document and have the approval of the Assembly of Catholic Bishops of Ontario.
Thank you, Superintendent Pocassan. Any questions for the superintendent? All right. Motion, please. A motion to get that on the floor. Trustee Marai, seconded by trustee Rowe, thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Cabaccio? Pocassan, sorry. Go ahead. No questions? I'm dealing with a couple of issues here, so patience. Any questions pertaining to that? No? All right. All in favor? Thank you so much.
Opposed.
Opposed, thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. We are going to skip over 8.8 and 9.1 and we'll come back to it shortly. We're doing 10.2, School Educational Field Trips. Superintendent McGillicay?
Through you, Madam Chair. And attached for information are the approved school educational trips. And I will take questions at this time.
Any questions to school educational field trips? None, none, none. No? All right, thank you. Directors, annual report, 10.3.
Through you, Madam Chair. Attached are, is a link in your package, trustees. This is a report that we post yearly. This actually reflects the year 2015, 2016, required by the Ministry of Education that we post an annual report. So it, it's actually part of the last strategic plan. And you'll notice, near the end of this report, we highlight the new strategic plan. So this coming year, when we develop the, the annual report, it will be more reflective of the, the strategic plan that trustees developed. So I'd have to take any questions.
Okay. Superintendent Cabaccio? You can just sit there.
I'm fine. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Before trustees, this evening is the proposed 2017 Facility Renewal Projects, which we presented to the board back on November 15th. Staff has further developed these proposed projects and they're all summarized in Appendix B of your report. The preliminary cost estimate for the 2017 projects is $14.3 million. And the funding for these projects is available to the board and the breakdown of the actual budget is shown in Appendix A. The funding will come from three sources. The first being our proceeds of disposition of approximately $3.7 million, our school condition improvement grant from the ministry of $6.2 million, and the school renewal reserve will make up the remaining balance of approximately $4.4 million. Trustees will note that we have submitted a, our proposal to the ministry for the consolidation of St. Joseph's and St. James utilizing $3.9 million of our proceeds of disposition. In the event we are unsuccessful getting that approval by the ministry, and we're anticipating a response by May of this year, we're suggesting that this $3.9 be directed to these projects so that the school renewal reserve funding can remain intact as it is because it has more flexibility than the PODs do. And the recommendation have, before you, are four recommendations that we'd like you to consider. And I'll just read through them and you can ask questions for clarification. The first one is to authorize staff to complete the 2017 facility renewal projects. The second resolution resolves that the Halton Catholic School Board authorize staff to expense funds in the amount of $14.3 million for, from capital reserves and school capital in the amount not to exceed $14.3 million. Resolve that the proposed 2017 facility renewal project spend is to be funded from the following three funding resources: proceeds of disposition, $3.695 million, school condition improvement, $6.23 million, and school renewal reserve of $4.375. And the fourth motion that we ask for your approval is that resolve that in the event an additional $3.9 million of POD funding is available, these funds be redirected to the proposed 2017 facility renewal projects and the corresponding amount be reduced from the school reserve funding contribution. And I complete my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. A mover, please? We're going to take these one at a time. So on the first one, Vice Chair Trites, seconded by trustee Rowe?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
Point of order, please. I, I have a question.
Yes.
This is a staff report and we're, we're being asked to, to vote on resolutions?
This is an action item. This is an action item. It's 8.8, Proposed Facility Projects.
Thank you very much.
No problem. So I want to take them one at a time. And the reason I want to take them one at a time is because when you have to come back and undo anything, you have to undo the whole thing if you lump them together. So even though it takes a few more minutes, do them one at a time. It's, it's better in the long run. It, it makes it cleaner if you have to come back and change something. You don't have to take everything apart. So we had, the first one was moved by Vice Chair Trites, seconded by trustee Rowe. Are there any questions to the first one? Trustee Danko?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we approve, so if we pass the first resolution, does that, I mean, does it make the other resolutions moot regarding the amounts? I mean, because we'll be authorizing to complete the, the project. So I just, I guess I'm just trying to understand the method to your madness here.
Well, I've got four motions. And if the business department think they want to separate them because it's more fiscally responsible, that's just fine with me.
Three motions?
Do you have them all?
Through you, Madam Chair.
What I don't want to have happen is come back and redo, undo them as we've had to do before in certain situations where we've had to undo a package because one has changed.
Madam Chair is correct. On that count, as well as we wanted to be as transparent and open where the funding was coming for, for these sources as well. And we wanted to clear all, all four resolutions, in particular, the, the fourth resolution where there's an opportunity to use the POD funds prior to using our own reserve funds because of the flexibility that we have with our, our own school renewal reserves, which we won't have with POD.
Okay. Thank you. So going back to the first resolution, are there any other comments or questions? Trustee Quinn and then trustee Danko?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I want to confirm that none of the, the renovations or proposed construction would be going into schools that we may be shuttering in the next six to 12 months if, if that's a little bit more.
I don't think that would happen.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not aware of any schools that would be closing in the next six to eight months.
Don't know. Well, we work very hard not to waste money. But we would have to refer that to trustee Cabaccio.
Further to that- Further to that point, Madam Chair, the, the type of renewal items are roofing, boilers. Items involve health and safety that need to be addressed. There is some school refresh involved in those facilities. It's, I don't believe any of the schools located on the list, as you see in appendix B, are subject to any closure or consolidation as well.
Thank you. Trustee Marai?
Just for clarification, I can't recall a time when, I can't clarify when we have undone one of these. Could you give an example of it? When we've undone one of these in the past? You, you've asked to separate them because you may want to undo them.
No, I've asked to separate them, not here. I have asked to separate them, Madam Chair. I've asked to separate them.
Okay. So would, was there like one in the recent past that we've undone?
I, I remember a conversation about it, about something. I can't remember what it was or when, but it certainly was within recent memory.
Okay, my, my second comment, if I may, Madam Chair, is just on the fourth resolution, I, I find that in many times we make contingencies for situations where funding may not come through with the, with the ministry, which I think is smart in many ways, but I also think it gives an indication to the ministry that we're not very serious about some of our priorities and what we like. And I'm wondering if that resolution can be left to a further time period after various events take place.
Okay. Superintendent, go ahead.
Just on this point, the, you're speaking to, gotta bring this closer. This doesn't relate to additional ministry funding. This is funding we already have in our proceeds of disposition reserve from prior sale of land. So this money is available for the board with approval from trustee to be spent on priorities. Three point nine million of that, I believe it's seven point six million total balance currently in that reserve. Three point nine million of that has been earmarked for the current school closures, consolidation process that is ongoing, that the trustees will be deciding on at the next board meeting. And, sorry, actually, three point nine million, I should correct that, is with regards to the previous par that was approved and sent to the ministry for the rebuild of St. Joseph and then St. James into St. Joseph. So we were not approved initially by the ministry for new rebuild. The suggestion was to come up with a more cost-effective option and maybe a partial rebuild or addition, and the cost differential between retrofit and addition to a new build was the three point nine million we were suggesting in a creative funding way, if we could use some of our own money for that. If that doesn't get approved by the ministry, we would like to be able to reallocate this proceeds of disposition reserve to renewal projects. That's all this resolution is requiring, requesting trustees, is not additional funding from the ministry.
If I may, just one clarification. Does it make any, any difference to staff if we were to have that resolution after the ministry makes its decision?
We would have to, to come back.
All right. So going back to the first resolution, we've got it moved by Susan, seconded by Mark. Any more questions, concerns, complaints, comments?
Chair Abenda, I'm assuming these are projects that have been deferred for some time?
Are these projects that have been deferred, Jacamo?
Not necessarily. We've, we've planned for them. We're on the horizon. They're projects we've identified as needing immediate attention.
Okay, all right. So any other questions, or can we take the vote? Trustee Quinn?
In favor of resolution number one?
Thank you. Manuela? Mark? Christina? Anthony?
In favor.
Susan?
In favor.
In favor.
Jane?
In favor.
Ingrid?
In favor.
Thank you, Helena? All done. Thank you. Resolution number two. A mover please?
I'll move it.
Trustee Danko? Seconded by Paul. Any questions, comments to that particular resolution? I can read it out. I resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board authorize staff to expense, spend funds from the facility, school capital and renew, renewal reserves for the proposed 2017 Facility Renewal Projects, and that the projects will not exceed fourteen million three hundred thousand dollars. All in favor? Trustee Quinn, is that an up or a down? Are you up or down?
We're gonna have a discussion on it.
Discussion? You want to have a discussion? Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to ask what the total amount in the, the POD is now. If we're taking out three point six nine five million, what's the total amount available in that reserve fund?
Did you get that?
If there are, through you, Madam Chair, there is currently approximately seven point six million dollars in the reserve for PODs, and three point nine of it has been set aside in the event that the St. James, St. Joseph consolidation gets approved in May of this year. So the remaining balance of approximately three point six nine five is being directed towards these projects.
Okay. All right.
In favor.
Thank you. Manuela?
In favor.
Mark? Christina?
In favor.
Anthony?
In favor.
Susan?
In favor.
Paul? Jane? Thank you.
In favor.
All, everyone's in favor, thank you. The third one. Resolve that the proposed 2017 Facility Renewal Project expenditure be funded from the following three funding sources. POD, three, three million six hundred ninety-five thousand, school condition improvement, six million two hundred and thirty thousand, and school renewal reserve, four million three hundred and seventy-one, seventy-five thousand dollars. Move it, please. Anthony, you're moving it? Thank you. Trustee Quinn? Thank you. Seconded by Vice Chair Trites, thank you. Any conversation, questions, discussion pertaining to that? Okay, no? Okay. For the vote, trustee Carabella? In favor. Student trustee Ingrid? Trustee Michael? Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Vice Chair Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Manuela?
In favor.
And trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you very much. Last one. Okay, resolve that in the event a three, an additional three point nine million of the POD funding is available, these funds will be redirected to the proposed 2017 Facility Renewal Projects, and the corresponding amount will be reduced from the school renewal reserve funding contribution. Move by.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Anthony.
Do we need to move, make a motion to go past ten?
No, not just yet because I'm two minutes to go on my watch, which of course is Big Ben, but we're in the middle of something, so we can do it afterwards. Seconded by trustee Jane? Thank you. Trustee Michael? Any conversation pertaining to this? None whatsoever? Okay. Take the vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
Opposed.
Okay, trustee Marai's opposed. Trustee Danko?
In favor.
In favor? Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Manuela?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor. Did you miss trustee Trites?
I'm in favor as well. I didn't see you around. I was going to ask you. I hadn't forgotten about you. Just didn't see you there. Okay, so that passes? Okay, thank you. And moving on. Something about these lights in here. Moving on, you have with you, we have to do the other staff report, don't we? Superintendent Kobachio, proposed 2017 kindergarten outdoor learning play space projects, and I'm going to take the vote for the time. Trustee Quinn, time? It is now ten o'clock. So we need, is it two-thirds or half? Fifty percent? Two-thirds to go, two-thirds vote to go past ten o'clock, and we will be finished before ten thirty. So trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Ingrid? Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Sorry? I know.
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Manuel?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. Okay, we're going past ten very, not long, not long. Okay, so now we are with Jacamo, proposed kindergarten outdoor play area.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last year, the board approved an ambitious and successful program to replace its existing kindergarten metal and plastic playgrounds with new kindergarten outdoor learning play spaces constructed primarily of natural earth elements. The board's curriculum department has reported to trustees the overwhelming response by kindergarten students, teachers and parents to these new natural outdoor learning spaces. In 2017, it's proposed to move to the second phase of this program to convert thirteen additional kindergarten play spaces, and the specific details of those thirteen projects is in the report you have before you. The preliminary budget for these thirteen projects is two million and twenty-five thousand dollars. The budget breakdown is shown in appendix A, and the funding is available for these projects, of which nine hundred thousand comes from the ministry's FDK allocation, and one point one two five million comes from the facility capital reserve. It is staff's intention to bring this report forward at the next regular meeting of the board for trustee consideration and approval. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Kobachio? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Would that nine hundred thousand dollars in the FDK funding exist if we deferred this for a year or longer to see, to have further results from the first phase in of, of the natural playground spaces?
Through you, Madam Chair, I would not recommend deferring the money. We've, we probably, ministry would have preferred of us to spend it a year or two ago. We just didn't want to waste how we spent the money, and I'm concerned of having to return the money, so I'd rather spend it before it gets asked to be returned to them.
Okay.
Follow-up, Madam Chair. So then the money was specified to be used for, for play spaces for FDK, not for anything else in the classroom?
Through you, Madam Chair, the money is allocated for FDK setup. I think Anna knows the specifics. Jill unfortunately wasn't able to attend this evening, but it's, it's intended for the setup of, of kindergartens. Not necessarily outdoor play spaces, but the definition is broad enough and flexible enough to allow us to do this.
Anyone else? Questions for Jacamo? No? Okay. Okay, Helena? You okay? Do you have a question? No. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kobachio. All right. We've done student trustee updates, and we've done the educational field trips to directors on your report. Miscellaneous information, you have the minutes of the January tenth, 2017 Policy Committee Meeting. Correspondence, you've received some material in this package, and I think I also sent you emails regarding a couple of these items, the safe water and the modernized municipal legislation. You also have a letter under twelve point two from Father Jason of St. Michael's Parish, that is in your package. We have a question coming in from the open question period, so I'll ask the director to respond, please.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Open question, the Halton Catholic Athletic Association in response to a trustee question about whether or not there would be added costs. Superintendent Pocassan responded that financially, we are not incurring additional costs at all, and have been able to finance everything quite well and have a very solid plan moving forward. What is the offsetting the increase of a full-time convener, which would previously have been shared with the district board? And does the solid plan include any increase to the annual athletic fees charged to our high school student athletes? The response is, we've, staff have reviewed and studied this financial perspective with great care over the past year to ensure that the formation of the Halton Catholic Athletic Association would be feasible. We will be financing the position within the budget currently provided to curriculum by reviewing our costs dedicated to outside, outside consulting fees and the portion dedicated to physical education. We were already paying for half the salary of the athletic convener, along with other consulting fees that we were charged throughout the year in addition to this fee. We can most definitely assure and guarantee parents that there's no plan to reduce any services related to students, and absolutely no intention to raise athletic fees charged to student athletes as related to the formation of this association.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, we do not have to go back in camera. We need a resolution to excuse trustee Ian Tomasi. Thank you, trustee Michael, seconded by trustee Marai. All in favor? Thank you. An adjournment and a closing prayer, so I need a mover to adjourn, and then trustee Danko will pray for us. Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Carabella. All in favor? Thank you. Anthony, please.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. A student's prayer. Creator of all things, true source of light and wisdom, lofty source of all being, graciously let a ray of your brilliance penetrate into the darkness of our understanding and take from us the double darkness in which we have been born, sin and ignorance. Give us a sharp sense of understanding, a retentive memory, and the ability to grasp things correctly and fundamentally. Grant us the talent of being exact in our explanations and the ability to express ourselves with thoroughness and charm. Point out the beginning, direct the progress, help in the completion through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much, Anthony. And I would like to thank the crew that have stayed back to take care of everything here, and thank you so much for all your work, and we do appreciate it. And to the students behind us, a great job. Thank you very much to everybody, and thank you to all staff and trustees for an excellent evening. Thank you. Safe drive home.